meeting to order, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico, the essential and perfect friendship among the united nations. I do want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I would love to have this many people in every one of our meetings. I'm kind of surprised that everybody has shown out because I think there may be some misinformation out there. This meeting, if you read the agenda, there's only one thing on the agenda, and that is how I handled the water ordinance committee. When I took over as mayor, one of the first things that I discovered is our water ordinances were out of date, and they did have some flaws in there. Now, listen, pretty much unarguable with everybody involved. After a while, I set together a committee which was made up with two board members, or two trustees, several employees, and then two or three people from the public, because I wanted to, and all around, a diverse group of people for this committee. That committee has worked great. They've gone through it. Trustee Maynard and trustee Smaga were the trustees that were on it. We do have several employees and a few community members that were on it, and it really did work good. We got about ninety percent of it done, and then it came to some controversial places that were in discussion. Now, this committee is not setting ordinance. This committee was putting together ideas for our ordinance. The ordinance will not be decided on until all the trustees get together for a work session. Now, it has come to my attention that the, this ten percent that was left was of controversial items or arguable items. It wasn't going anywhere, and everything was about to stop happening, and the board was either going to have to have really long work sessions, or just take what they, you know, well, either side gave us. So, what I did, and I don't know if there's any of the letters out, I sent in a letter on October fifteenth, not dissolving the water ordinance committee, but separating it. I pulled the trustees off of it, and I asked the trustees that were on it to continue their work and give me their ideas on what the water ordinance should be. And then I asked the committee to go on without the trustees on it and give me their ideas. Once I have these ideas, we will have a group work session where we will decide what we want on there and what we do not. And at that point is when we will publish and change it. So if you are here for this, to see what's on the ordinances, this is the wrong meeting, but I will ask you if you do have ideas. Our ordinances are open to the public. Print some out, see if anything needs to be changed, because even though you're, if you're not on the committee, or if you're not trustee, I still want to hear your opinion. So you can, if you just want to circle one little spot and say, "This is bad. This is what we need to change." And the trustees, when we have our work session, we'll get to that, and we'll, we'll look at every idea. I mean, that's, the reason I didn't, I wanted a committee to begin with was so that work session would last, you know, two or three hours as opposed to twelve to twenty-four hours. So that's just the start of, kind of, to explain why we're here, in case anybody had misinformation or, and now I did structure this meeting for the discussion of the water ordinance committee, and what, the way I'm going to do this, there will be no public interaction in this because it is a special meeting, and then we will have, every trustee will be given up to ten minutes to speak their part. After the ten minutes, on every trustee that wants to speak, then we will come to a motion, and whatever the group decides is the way we will move forward. All right? So the first thing, or the next thing on the agenda, is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion? And Bruce did not read his agenda.
Is it here? Okay. Sorry.
I'll make a motion. Have a motion by trustee Teeman to approve the agenda as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by trustee Smaga. Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify that the, the formation of the committee itself is a question. How its members are selected is part of this question.
Correct.
The purpose of the committee is part of this question. So we're, we're not, this is a pretty wide open debate. So while there's one single item, this item is very complex, and involves our whole view of government and the village of Plowbro.
Okay. What is it? Point of clarity, you were saying, Jim? You said that the way the committee was formed, you know, I'm curious, what is your discrepancy in the way it was formed? You mean, the second part, when the mayor, under his authority, decided to streamline it and get this done, in a way?
I think from, from the inception of it, if it wasn't set up as a true committee, committees have chairs and have structure. The, the idea that we're going to be filtering ideas of legislation through a committee still needs to be run by the legislative process, which is the trustees. So that's why, to me, from the formation of the committee on, I've had questions on, on how this was going to work. As it has progressed, we see it doesn't.
Well, my, and this is just my understanding, I thought the village clerk was to run the meeting. If, if, I'm wrong about that, that's fine.
No, it was the way it was set up, yes.
Okay. So we did, in a sense, have a chairman?
Yes.
It was never designated like that.
Okay, so in other words, we didn't have it on paper in black and white, what they said?
It's legislation, you need to understand how we do it.
Well, it was a committee and workshop intent to filter through this, you know, and we did have citizens and other members sat on it, you know, and we got down, I think controversy is getting, the commercial, is that not my understanding? Is that where the rub is?
Right now, we're not getting into the details of what's on the ordinances, and I'm not going to let us go down that aisle.
Okay, all right.
This is strictly the committee. So, any other discussion?
I got one.
I'm sorry, I'm not, you may have been late coming in.
I know.
I am not going to allow the public to have input in this meeting.
But is a committee member allowed to speak?
No, ma'am, because as of right now, you are part of the public. So this is a trustee meeting, and it's only about the next step. Okay? No, no offense, and it won't be long, and I'll have you up here with me.
Okay.
Any other?
Nope.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Now we run to new business, and I did have a request in writing for trustee Teeman to get the first ten minutes.
I can hear him.
So I will authorize that. When you start speaking, I'm going to hit the start button.
So in your memo, you wanted our input regarding water or what we saw as potential areas that need to be looked at. One of the areas I've had concern with are the water taps here in the village, which we are currently charging some fifteen hundred dollars for, whether it's commercial or residential. So I got with Jubal to see all of the parts that he has in the installation of a water tap. Now, we're charging fifteen hundred dollars per tap, commercial or residential. So what we found, you know, our study was on a three-quarter inch, which is most of the residential, residential homes, that the cost is roughly of twenty-five hundred dollars. The cost for a two-inch tap, which there are some here in the village, is approximately sixty-six hundred dollars, and the cost for a four-inch tap is roughly seventy-eight hundred dollars. So the charge that we're making of fifteen hundred is totally inadequate to cover our costs. So my recommendation on future tax will be that we charge twenty-four hundred for a three-quarter inch tap, sixty-six hundred for a two-inch tap, and seventy-one hundred for a four-inch tap. And that would be a blanket charge, no refunds, no overs, whatever, involved with this at all. But at least it was covering our costs, which it doesn't at all do now. We're way behind when it comes to that. So that's my recommendation on water taps. Now, my next concern has to do with bulk water sales. At the present times, bulk water sales are being charged the same as mine being charged as a resident of the village. Now, there's no, there was, what I can understand, there was never a fifteen hundred dollar tap fee. The village has provided all the piping, all the maintenance to supply the areas where the water is taken from. So, and when the village has had to haul water at roughly six cents a gallon, we've continued to charge the three cents a gallon to the bulk water people. So this is not, financially is not a good thing for the village to be into. So my concern is that we need to change that charge to the bulk water customers. Another thing I've found is that on Borough Street and on Highway eighty-two, there are approximately twenty-seven dumpsters used by non-citizens of the community. The citizens here in the community have their own dumpsters within their areas, so they know, they rarely ever use these. So these are being used by people that are non-residents. So in lieu of the fifteen hundred dollars that we never did charge for the hookup, in lieu of the fact that we do not charge for any garbage service for non-local people, my contention is that we need to change the charge to bulk water users from three cents a gallon to five cents a gallon, which is going to help cover maintenance costs on the area where they're getting the water from, as well as helping the village with non-partici-, non-residents using a dumpster. So that's my two concerns at this point.
Okay, are you done?
I'm done.
Well, you do have five minutes, five and a half minutes left, and your recommendations are, that's exactly what I want from anybody who's willing to pull them in for when we do have this committee done and that everything's settled, because that's what our work session is going to look like. Right now, we're still discussing, what are we doing with the committee? So if you'd like to add anything else, or, we're good?
I'm good.
Mr. Smaga, trustee Maynard?
I'm going to receive in the second half.
Okay. Trustee Maynard, I believe. Bruce threw you the ball.
Good evening, Mayor Dinning, my fellow trustees. A special thanks to all these people who took off work early today, who closed their businesses early today so they could make this an important meeting. Tonight, we're here to discuss and decide who should legislate the ordinances to govern all of the people of Plowbro. Our governing body consists of a mayor and four trustees. Those of us who have been elected represent the people and the property owners within the village limits of Plowbro. These are village positions, not county positions. Anyone who wishes to serve a larger area needs to run for office in the county. Trustees have been elected to represent the people within the village of Plowbro limits. This is our community. This is our Plowbro. Trustees are responsible to the people of Plowbro for their legislation. Again, we have been elected to represent the people. Our duty is to get the legislative process back on track. The responsibility rests with the council. The mayor set this committee up with the best of intentions. It was to include two trustees, Bruce Smaga and myself, a village clerk, a maintenance supervisor, and two people from the village at large. That sounds simple enough at that point. It quickly changed to as many as five paid village employees, two members of the public, an out-of-area special interest looking for subsidies. Now, the village trustees, the representatives of the people, your representatives, have been removed from the active committee. One member of the public who is running unopposed to be a trustee has also been removed. This committee never had a designated chair or an organized structure. It operated in closed, non-public meetings. That means you couldn't hear what they were saying. Now that they have removed your elected representatives, we can't hear what they're Their work in the village is important, and they do a good job for us. However, their job description does not include legislation. This is reserved for your governing body. All of us know hindsight is twenty-twenty. This review of an ordinance should be conducted by the governing body. It is our job. Our village government is structured with a mayor and four trustees. The mayor has the authority given to him or her by the majority support of the trustees. The mayor doesn't walk into a room with any authority other than that given to it by your trustees. This is how the system is designed. This is how the New Mexico legislature passed it down to us. This is the law. So your trustees are your legislators. They are your public representatives. So I look at them, this is the center of your government. In this center, we have a balancing act to do. On one side, we have the public interest. A good example of that is like, no, no higher taxes, all of us, we don't want more taxes. That's a public interest. That's what you bring to the table. On the other side, because we are part of the government, we have a village interest that we have to be very thoughtful about. This is how do we pay for the goods and services that you expect from us? How many of you, "Why don't you fix those dang roads?" "We get back, where's the money coming from?" "I would want higher taxes, I want better roads." That's a balancing act. It's not simple, but it's legislative. It is to be done by your elected representatives, because if you don't like how we do this, you get some new guys up here. When we have new issues come up, mayors are to suggest and guide us their leadership position, but then it passes to the trustees. The mayors are the what of an issue. The trustees become the how. It's like, "Give you set up a committee with a trustee as a chair, and then they work on whatever the issues were at hand, then you report back in, and you get your books, and move on." We had good intentions going into this, but we have drifted off track. We are creating legislation. The trustees are the legislators. So it is our responsibility to establish the procedure. When you're elected as a public official, you enter into a civil contract with the people you represent. It includes placing the public interest ahead of your own. It is in front of your family, it is in front of your business, it is in front of any other job you hold. As trustees, we have been elected to represent the people of our community. That's within the village's limits of Plowbro. We are responsible to the people for legislation that will govern that whole community. Our duty is to get this legislation back on track. Our responsibility is to return the ordinance review exclusively to the governing body through a series of workshops open to the public. So fellow trustees, let's do our job. Let's work for these people like we said we wanted to. Let's don't be derelict in the duty and pass it off to disrelated parties. That's my.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Trustee Smaga.
Okay. Well, you, you know, you have said a lot of things that accurate. You know, the committee was formed to provide guidance and recommendations. Then, as usual, now maybe we were lax in formally taking a piece of paper and putting who was at top and who was underneath and where it went. Okay? So we rec, we developed this committee to work on the water ordinances, and the bottom line is, the reason that committee was formed is we're not paying our bills to maintain our water system with what we charge. That's the bottom line, straight up. We're losing money. Okay? So, we formed a committee to work on the water and come up with suggestions. So after we make guidance and recommendations, then it would come to the full council, and in a council meeting that's open to the public, and so were those workshops, those were actually open to the public. Okay? As a workshop, it's not required to be posted, or am I wrong with that part of it?
No, it has to be posted.
Okay, it does have to be. So anyway, it's posted in the post office and I can get on our bulletin board. So after we make recommendation, it comes to the full council for review, and the council is to either accept it, change it, or go back to committee and rework it. Okay? So, there is a process, and maybe, in all fairness, we were somewhat lax in our form of structure, okay? We didn't maybe have that the way it should be. All right? But at no point are we trying to misrepresent the citizens of this village, okay? I live in this village and have for many years, and pay a basic fee and stuff, and the last thing I want is for things to cost more. But that's the reality, things are costing more, okay? And not just your consumer goods. We just replaced that pipeline and did that road project down there. The road project itself was a hundred and ninety-five thousand. The village crew put in a new sewer and water. That ductile iron cost us twenty-two thousand dollars to go from Borough to eighty-two. Just for some insight, we're not paying the bills with what we charge now. So unfortunately, to cover those costs, there's going to have to be an increase. There's greater demand on our system, there's more requirement from our system, so this is an inevitable thing. We are working on this. No decision, no legislation has been taken. Nothing has been put on the books, okay? Still in the process of doing that, all right? I don't know if, there seems to be a lot of faces here, I don't know what got put out, why, everybody's, things are going to go out of sight, you know? It will come to the public, and if we want to go ahead and get back online, and we, I might, you know, can't do it right now, but I'd make a recommendation that our chair would be our clerk, because the clerk has the greatest knowledge of all stuff that's required by the state and where we can go with this stuff, okay? Just to reiterate, not trying to slip anything by the constituents of this town, all right? Straight up. If you've got any questions of my integrity, great, doesn't bother me, I got to answer to my guy, and that's it, right? But I will do my honest best to make sure that all legislation and that all legalities are followed. So, what else is on the agenda here? You have ten minutes, okay? What's the next step? I am done. If we want to make recommendations, we do with our committee. I'm all ears.
You still have five minutes.
That's enough, that's enough grace, Davey, for me.
All right, well, I am going to jump in here for, with ten minutes, I'm not going to use all ten minutes. I just have to put a couple little things straight. The committee is not about legislation. The committee was from the beginning about ideas. I'm trying to get ideas from the public to the governing body, so the governing body can create the legislation without going every single line, and we can get concerned citizens to help us. The other thing was, that was alluded to, that, I know a lot of y'all have not seen the letter that I wrote, but our community member, Ms. McCoy, I did, when I asked the trustees to step off the committee, I asked for her, as of November first, to step off the committee, and I did want her replaced by another community member. I'm still definitely want her in play, but as a trustee, there is a certain, I hate to use the word, but gravitas that will control any committee that you're in. And I'm not interested in one person's view of this, I'm interested in everybody's. So, my first statement is still wide open. If anybody has a problem with the way the ordinance are written, or ideas, by all me and send them to me. When the trustees are looking for ideas and going through this, what we will look at.
Do you want them to send it to the village office?
Either one. If he goes to the village office, he'll come to me.
And then he can have it in front of us?
Uh, yeah. It's, if he comes to the village office, it will get to me.
I thought I silenced that.
I usually tell everybody to turn their cell phones silent.
I must have had it on silent.
And I was the first one to have my phone ring, that's me. So I do apologize about that part.
Sorry.
And so...
Oh, it's publisher's free, yes.
The, the next step in this is to listen to trustees if anybody wants to make a motion, and, but, the, what it should entail is what is our next step? Do we want to go with the letter that I sent out and the steps that I went, or do we want to go with something different? Yes, sir?
I want to make a motion. The exclusion of trustees from any committee, I, I just have severe disagreement with. This is, the last thing you want to do is close down your government to any committee. There's no committee in this town that should be closed to your elected representatives. That's just the way it is, that's just right. I want the motion to read that we return the ordinance review exclusively to the governing body through the series of workshops open to the public. It's going to end up on our desk anyway. We might as well get with our work. We're putting off serious decisions. This thing is done. The committee, if it had a purpose, is over. It's now on our shoulders. We need to do our job. If it takes us a couple of meetings, if it takes us twenty meetings, that's our job. That's what we said we would do for these people. They deserve it. This is legislation. You can't filter ideas and not affect legislation. So my motion, return the ordinance review exclusively to the governing body through a series of workshops open to the public.
I have a motion on the table to turn the ordinance committee, water ordinance, oh, water ordinances, to strictly the governing body through a series of workshops, and not use... any more committees. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that is a motion made by trustee Maynard. Do I have a second?
Do you have to have a second before we can have discussion?
Yes.
Well, I've got some discussion, and I want those questions answered before our...
I would, I would prefer a second and a discussion and a vote, pass or fail, to a motion that dies by lack.
Okay.
So I do have a second to the motion by trustee Maynard, or, sorry, by trustee Smaga? He's in a mask, I couldn't tell.
That's right. This, I wear this into the bank, too. Never thought I would, but...
Okay, so it's been moved and segmented. Any further discussion?
Yes. There, Jim, you, are you opposed to the maintenance crews that deal in the water being on?
To, to me, what we need the maintenance supervisor for, when we have a technical question, like, like on cost of meters, great, that's, that's his data. We can ask him that question, he can answer the question, and we move on.
Okay, that's one question. Then there seems, sitting on the committee, it seemed like there was more than one. You know, I mean, they didn't talk a lot, but, you know, we constantly would ask them if they had input, and they'd say yes or no, you know? So, if, you know, to create great, great legislation, you know, you often call input, people with input into it, so...
And we will in, in our open meetings. That's what workshops are for. Hey, Bill, what do, what do we need to know from Bill? We ask Bill. You know, if we need to know something about, uh, our procurement costs.
Well, let's just address the, you seem to feel like we're trying to shirk the people, and I don't believe we've done that. We're trying to come up with a rewritten ordinance, and then it would come before the committee or the council, and the council could say, I need to move to postpone for review. And that's a process. So I, you know, I'm a little confused that somehow there's some conception that we're trying to do something in the dark. I don't believe that's accurate.
To me, listen to yourself, Bruce. You say, it's gonna come before the committee.
Before the council, after the committee's done.
And, and the, the council or the committee by their, by Bill's permission is ninety percent done with whatever it's gonna do. The thing is, to me, it's just time. This thing needs to come on to us. This, this, we are, we are letting people beat it to death. I've been in meetings since May on this topic. This isn't like I gave up on the first meeting. This is over and over and over. No, it's time for us, guys. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Then maybe we can push through, because yes, we've been in those committee meetings quite a bit, you know? I agree. I didn't think Bill's letter to restructure and try to make headway was a bad one, I didn't think he would do anything. That is his ability to do that, you know, but okay. So if anybody thinks we're trying to do something underneath this tablecloth, that's not the situation. It's, it's a big ordinance, and it takes some real work. So if we wanna do, bring it for the council, John, the George, you know, then let's all pick a date, start where we left off, and you guys will have to come up and speak.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table to end the committee, the trustees will take over and do this in a series of workshops.
I would make one recommendation amend, that our village clerk be the chairperson to this. You don't think so? You just said we needed a chairperson. You want it to be a councilman?
The motion is that we return the ordinance review exclusively to the governing body.
Okay, are you making a motion on, to amend?
I was, but he isn't, but that was my amendment, that. We also involve the village clerk in with it. That's an impartial chair, or bad person. She has, she's not, you know, committing to any one business or one group or any of that. That would be an impartial, in my opinion, chairperson, or make another one.
I have a motion on the table to amend the current motion to appoint the clerk or other designated impartial person to chair the work session.
I feel that is still part of the, it's not an elected government or city government official, but she is the head of the village operations, so to me, it's a fit. I don't know, make a different recommendation.
Oh, that was a motion, I was just clarifying a motion.
That is a motion.
Still a motion.
And I didn't ask Ms. Garcia if she would like to sit on that. She may say no.
Do I have a second?
You can if you want.
I will say no.
Okay.
She did?
I will be in the meetings as the village clerk treasurer.
Okay, but not the chair?
No.
Okay. Do I have a second?
It's lucky, it's lucky now.
I am gonna have to, that motion is going to die of lack of second.
Okay.
From trustee Smaga.
Okay.
Okay, so we are back to the original motion, but it has been moved and segmented to dissolve the committee, and the trustees and the, the council will take over from here. No further discussion? I'm gonna ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries two to nothing. And the... That's all we got. So we will have to set some workstation, work dates coming up, I was trying to avoid ruining weekends for everybody. I'll stand for one more motion.
I'm gonna get a motion. Go ahead, sir. I'm looking to adjourn meeting.
I have a motion to adjourn, go second.
Second.
The movement's segmented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.